Uh, welcome.
Uh, welcome to the City Council Studies Session, February 20th, and tonight we are having a joint meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, to talk about communication and ID sharing. Can you not hear me?
No.
No.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Much better.
Okay, thank you. Um, actually, if the Planning and Zoning Commission would like to come up and join us at the table, um, we may need some more chairs, so, um...
Oh, yes, welcome.
Sure you want to ask on the end?
I'm Mike Freemeyer.
Good to meet you.
Cheryl Wink.
To me to hear your voice.
Should we just sit here, the extras, or... There's room up here, too, if somebody would like to sit up here.
You go up there, maybe.
I think... We'll move around. I think the commission needs to stay together.
Okay, perfect.
We really need it.
Okay, we'll stay together.
First, there's safety in numbers. For both of us.
Mike's over.
Please.
Sure.
Mr. Freemeyer, do that.
You got space?
Yeah.
Come on over, big guy.
All right, here we go.
All right.
Sorry. Kind of sweep that mic. There we go, just kind of move them around when you need to talk.
Okay.
It's very fancy.
Well, you.
We would like to welcome you this evening, and, um, I'm just very thankful that you all came out. This is great. Why don't we go around and introduce yourselves, um, to us, and we'll do the same. So, would you like to start, Mr. Freemeyer?
Sure, I'm Mike Freemeyer, and I've served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for, what, five years, four years, something like that?
Great.
I'm Darrell Cotten, and I've served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for, I have lost track of the number of years, but about ten, I think.
My name's Kate Townley, and this is my second term on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And you are the current chair, correct?
Yes, and Mr. Freemeyer is the vice chair.
Vice chair?
Mm-hmm.
Great, thank you.
I'm Michelle Austin, and I was an alternate for a while. I think I've been a voting member for about six months, something like that. Somebody help me.
I'm Randall Coleman, and I've been on for about a year and a half.
I'm Mark Patinos, and I've been on for about three years.
Patrick Madrid, I've, uh, it's my first term, so, like, four years now, I think.
All right.
Judy Brown, I'm a new member.
Carolyn Marshall, I'm a new alternate.
I'm Ron Fish, and, and this is my last year. I'm in my twelfth year.
Well, thank you for serving, and I just, I want to thank all of you for your service and for coming out. Um, Amy, you want to go ahead with?
Yeah, sure, and thank you all for your service and your dedication to our community. Uh, my name's Amy Martinez, and I'm a council member at large.
Good evening, my name is Dave Questa, and I'm District Four.
Lorette Barrantnam, District Three.
Uh, Rita Russell, I am an at-large representative, and Mayor Potem.
Allison McKinnney Brown, I'm city attorney.
Eric Keck, city manager.
Nice jacket.
Thank you.
Linda Olson, District Two.
Cheryl Wink, council member at large.
Thank you, and it's very great to have you this evening, and I just, um, there were several things that I would like to talk about, and did you all get a copy of the agenda for this evening?
Yeah.
Um, the first thing I'd like to talk about is open communication between the two bodies, and, um, I think, at least from some of my observations, that, and since I've been on council, I've been on council for two years, I was a little bit concerned about not talking to any of you, um, or, you know, having any communication because of the quasi-judicial piece, and I do think that, um, we can foster communication between both bodies as long as it doesn't involve ex parte communication or, or anything like that, and I think it would be very good, uh, for us to, to do that. Do, does anybody have any, uh, concerns or ideas or anything about open communi- communication between, um, the two bodies?
I know we've talked, had similar concerns, where in our meetings, um, there are times where we wanted to, um, to meet with city council and have a, have, um, a mechanism to be able to make that happen. It definitely has come up at our meetings also.
Okay, great, and I mean, I did, I asked the city attorney about this before I went ahead with this meeting, because I didn't want to do anything, um, that we shouldn't do, and, and so I do believe that we can have this discussion. Any other, um, comments, or...
I would say it's hard to communicate outside something like this, though.
Yeah.
I mean, would it be considered inappropriate to, to come up and talk to you individually, or, you've got a problem, or if several of us got together, wouldn't that be a bit of a problem?
That might be, um... Go ahead.
The only area where we have to worry about inappropriate is if you are looking at a matter associated with, that's going to be going to public hearing, and that you're going to be making a recommendation to the body as a whole. Those conversations need to happen separately, uh, but if you want to talk about issues, example, uh, updates to code, or those, those types of legislative things, you can talk to the city council about that without it violating any kind of rules. Does that make sense, the difference between quasi-judicial and legislative decision-making?
In what venue? Does it have to be at a meeting, or can it be individually, or...
You can talk to city council members individually, again, about legislative issues, um, not about quasi-judicial.
So, just for clarification purposes, or, um, like if we're talking about, like we are now, we're talking about, um, well, we, we visit over and over between both of us, ADUs and, um, um, Airbnbs and those sorts of things. Are those the things we can talk about, or is it an individ- like, we can't talk about, like, an individual PUD or something like that? I'm just trying to find the line there.
You can't talk about individual cases.
Okay.
Cases that deal with an individual specific property, corporation-specific property, those are, the manner of dealing with those are set forth in code, and that basically makes sure to have a transparent hearing process, that all the information that either the planning commission or the governing body is to take in is heard in an open public meeting, so those conversations shouldn't take place. If you're in the middle of a difficult hearing, even if you don't intend to talk to a public or a city council member about one of those types of issues, be really aware of the optics. That may not be the time to have a sit-down about, oh, I want to do a code change, you probably want to wait until that process is complete.
Right.
But if you're talking about something that impacts the city as a whole, that's a legislative matter, and there aren't any rules about discussing those.
So short-term rentals and ADUs, and those kinds of big issues are okay, but, yes, don't do it when, yeah. Call them up on the phone.
Got it.
The only thing else I would add is that probably if we didn't schedule it formally, it probably would happen, except for some informal ones. I mean, I can't imagine us somehow gravitating together all of a sudden on Thursday afternoon.
Come on, we have such compelling things, come on.
So, I think if we really want to do this, it would have to be formally scheduled.
I, I think maybe so, and I think maybe after the meeting this evening or towards the end of the meeting, if this has been helpful, um, maybe it's something that we should look at scheduling again. I don't, maybe a couple times a year, or if there's something specific that we would like to talk about. Councilmember Barrantnam.
I listened to, um, I didn't get all of the last meeting, because the audio for your meeting, I'm sure the chair will take care of that, um, is kind of a little off, so if you want to go back and try and listen to the meeting, it's a little difficult to hear all of you, I think, the way that it was kind of set up, but the one prior to that, not the, not the first one for the year where there wasn't a quorum, but, um, the, the one after that, and there were some issues that came up, or was it at a special meeting where you guys discussed some of the, um, protocol and, uh, pro- um, what is it, quasi-judicial meetings and the...
That was at our last meeting.
That was the last one.
Yeah, and, um, there was a lot of, some misinformation, I couldn't tell who all was talking, but there was a lot of misinformation about, like, if two or more of you are in a room, somebody's got to leave and all of this, and so I'm really glad that these questions are coming up, because it's just not the, it's not the case. You guys have been appointed, um, and have authority under our charter to represent the community, and I think that some conversation with your elected representatives, as well as the people that, your constituents that you represent, is important to have that. You're not trying to make these decisions in a, in a bubble, so, um, I, I think I trust all of you to go ahead and understand when something's quasi-judicial, and you're talking about an individual property, or whether you're being, like, you're being interviewed for the position, and somebody asks how you think about something, that's hardly, you know, that's hardly inappropriate, uh, like she just said, so, I thought that there was some tension around that, and so I'm really glad that these questions are coming up, if...
Well, I, I would say one of the things that I think we're trying to be real careful of, as sunshine laws, and just making sure that if we're having a meeting, that we're stating that we're having a meeting, so, I, I think that it was important for us to have that discussion and get some clarity around that, and to make sure that, you know, we're not doing anything, or put ourselves in a position where it, there's optics that appears that we're having a meeting where we may be talking about something else, so, I just think it was important for us to get on the same page with that, but I feel like we left that meeting all with a general understanding of what the rules are and what we should be doing.
Well, those are some of the questions I think that are still coming up here, and I think that you guys ought to have conversation amongst yourselves, and certainly with council members about, about issues that are, uh, coming up, so that, you know, you're as informed as possible, but without, uh, it being about a specific property, so I hope that's been cleared up. Thank you.
Actually, I appreciate your opinion, um, but I am curious of your opinion. So, the discussion was regarding if there would be a quorum in a room where we didn't, didn't otherwise expect there to be, then presumably the optics would be such that one would say there is a quorum of a commission, so therefore somebody should leave, and I'm, I'm curious of your opinion, and I appreciate yours, I value yours.
So, a local...
I'm not going to take offense to that.
A local public body is any board, committee, commission, or authority, as you've, as you've already identified, so you are covered as a local public body, and that, the question that you're raising is actually one that's popping up in boards, commissions, and city councils across the state right now, so it's the perfect, perfect time. The rule under the state law is all meetings of a quorum, or three or more members of any local public body, whichever is fewer, and it's that three or more members that catches us. So, if you have three or more members walk into a meeting, and the meeting is about your specific area of public business, something having to do with, directly with discussion of the city's planning and zoning, um, it's a, it's a public meeting of the planning and zoning. Whether or not you, how you want to handle that, I think, is to be decided among your body. Uh, there are some, there are some boards, commissions, city councils that are stating that, uh, they want to handle it, that if they know that somebody is intending to go to a meeting associated, and with the city council, be anything associated with the, with the city business, with you guys with planning and zoning. If they know that, then the individuals intending to, to attend would contact the liaison and say, you need to be aware that I'm going to be at this planning and zoning meeting, and that way, if the liaison gets notice that there's going to be two there, the liaison probably should post a public notice that there is going to be a workshop meeting, study session, uh, at which members of the planning and zoning committee will be there, but they are not intending to speak or give any opinions, and that last piece is really important, that if you're at a meeting that you're going to be discussing planning and zoning matters, if it's not one of your regularly scheduled meetings, or your special meetings, whatever, I really encourage you, it, you can go to listen, but please don't speak, don't share your opinions with anybody. Your opinions need to be shared in an open forum where all the community can hear them.
Okay, so as a matter of policy, so rather than us fly, for lack of a better term, fly naked, as a matter of policy, it would seem prudent that the council would give us a policy by which not only this commission, but all commissions could live by, so therefore we could understand that we should leave that meeting, or we should stay in that meeting if we find ourselves, and we would have three or more members of a particular commission, and I think it would be a matter of public policy and council policy to give that directive, therefore we're not taking it upon ourselves and having others second-guess our judgment after the fact.
You have two ways of handling this. The one is, at this meeting between the two bodies tonight, to have that discussion, this is a, an issue that the city council has raised recently as well, so that's issue, that's one direction. The other one is, you do have bylaws, and you could modify your bylaws to state how it is you, as a body, will be dealing with this particular issue. Again, either one is legally acceptable.
Right, but wouldn't, I mean, just as a matter of governance, wouldn't it seem to be prudent that the council would set a policy, therefore there's not seven commissions in the city, and there's seven different policies, presumably one would quasi-judicially approve or not approve after the fact using 2020 hindsight? It would seem to me that every commission would be well-served by a city council giving us a policy, therefore we know what it is expected of us, regardless of what our particular bylaws read today.
It's more consistent.
I think that you've made a, a very clear statement, and I'm going to give the mic back to the mayor and let you, as two bodies, discuss how you want to address that.
Part of this came up when we went ahead and had, uh, I think, a majority of us, all of us but one attended the Tufts, uh, community meeting, and we all, as elected officials, have a right to attend a, a community meeting, um, and that doesn't make it a meeting of the council unless we part, unless we participate, so we've had part of that discussion. To sit there and say that some of you are entitled to go ahead and participate, or not participate, not participate, but attend a meeting so that you can go ahead and firsthand hear what's going on, uh, would kind of limit your ability to go ahead and do your job, and so council is, um, already come to an agreement that we can't determine, uh, ahead of time which one of us is going to go ahead to a community meeting, so I would expect that we would probably handle it the same way that we have allowed council to, and that we would expect that, like the attorney has said, that you would not participate or, um, engage in something when you've got a majority of people there, but to try to limit that ahead of time, otherwise what you end up doing is eliminating that none of you will attend, and I'm not sure that that's proper representation either, so council is currently struggling with that, and there's only, I think, four quasi-judicial boards, all of the boards, several of them have their own bylaws, that also is coming up, um, your bylaws are different than the other boards' bylaws, and so we don't want to trample on that either, but the city attorney is already working on that, and I'm sure you've listened to some of the other council meetings where we've discussed that as well, so I think it's important, though, that we don't do anything that limits it, so that the only information you're getting is from staff in that room at that time, that you're not, that you're going ahead and representing the people that you've been appointed to represent, and that you attend meetings, that you know what's going on, and have a pulse on the community as well as council has that, so...
Thank you, councilmember Barrantnam, and we are currently working on the policy manuals for boards and commissions, and so this is something that probably should come up. Thank you for that. Michelle?
Um, Mayor, I would, and, um, members, I would like to encourage more communication, to get back to your original question, between us and them, because frankly, the way things pragmatically work is that the general citizens come to you folks and talk to you a whole lot more than they come to our meetings, and I think it would, I mean, it would be nice if you guys say, well, that's going to be in P and Z, and, you know, go and attend, because we very, we get very, very few guests, um, or citizens in our meetings, um, and if, if they're coming to you and expressing opinions about things, I think an open communication to us, between us would be very helpful.
So, when people come to a planning and zoning public hearing, do you take citizen input at that time? I mean, some of it is developers, but citizens also come, correct?
There, there's testimony.
There's not very many, though.
Okay.
I think it depends.
Yeah, it depends.
It does, it depends.
Yeah, if we're having an open house on ADUs, there's lots, but if it's just about an individual thing that's, you know, on our regular agenda, it's, you know, we might get one person.
Well, typically we get more at a public hearing.
Okay, yeah, of course. All right, so, so what, what you asked, then, is that council would, um, communicate with you what we're hearing from citizens, or...
Or maybe we need to take the initiative in calling you guys, I don't know how, how the actual, how the flow would go, but...
The perennial problem is that, uh, the commission, it has not for many years, certainly as long as I've been on it, really set its own agenda. It takes that agenda from the staff and the council, and so the more communicate, we have a lot of communication with the staff, I don't think that's an issue, but we don't have much from the council, and we often ask, does the council want us to do this?
Okay, and I think, or we ask, what does council want from us?
What does council think we should do with this?
Yeah, okay, and I, that, some of that will come up in the discussion a little bit later, I hope. Councilmember Martinez?
Uh, I was just going to say, as previously stated, I don't think it's going to happen organically, I think we need to schedule it, um, so I don't know what the regularity of that would be, if it would be twice a year, or quarterly, or is, uh, issue-based instead of date-based, but I think we definitely should be more intentional about setting these, uh, meetings where we can all be together and not just expecting that it happens organically, because it won't.
I agree, I think it would be great to, I'm sorry, I went out of turn, but I think it would be great to be able to schedule some of these regularly and have some discussions, and, yeah, maybe there's, um, a minimum number per year, or as needed with, um, issues that come up. Um, I think that, I mean, we will have conversations, I'm sure, with individual council members about things that we're discussing that are legislative, not quasi-judicial, judicial, um, but I think it's important that as those ideas or opinions are, um, discussed, that it's, whether, make it clear whether that's the opinion of the, of the commission, or that's my personal opinion, so I think that can be the danger as well, in having some of the one-on-one conversations, is, is that just my opinion, or is that what we've agreed upon?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, I, I guess a point of, just information first, I, I did want to pick up further on the conversation about when there are three or more, is that going to come under something else here?
Um, we can, no, we can pick up on that right now.
Because I, I would like to hear what the constraints have been for you on this, so that we fully understand it, because if we should come up with something here, from us, I'd like to do that, if that makes, if that makes sense for you all, um, so that's one thing, and then the other thing is the communication, I do have a question about communication, so I don't know which, yeah, we've heard from one or two of you, but I'm not sure how you all, if you're wanting us to come up with our policy for you and all the other, uh, quasi-judicial ones, then I'd like to know that.
I can talk a lot, but I don't, um, so the, one of the, I brought up one of the original questions, because I asked about neighborhood meetings, which was my concern when we were talking about ex parte conversations, so what I was hoping for was some sort of direction to understand, when I go to a neighborhood meeting, whether I'm participating or not, if it's my neighborhood, can I participate? Um, Tufts was the reason, because that is my neighborhood, so that's why I brought up the question. So, I, um, wanted to understand what my role now that I'm on the commission at that type of neighborhood meeting, um, and then also it came up with, in ex parte conversations, or whether or not we were having a meeting, what happens if I happen to live by other people in the neighborhood, they're on their commission, and what do we do? So that was, that's my personal concern, is I don't want there ever to be an appearance that, um, that I'm doing that, and I'm very involved in the community, I'm, I, I participate in the chamber, I'm a real estate broker, I know a lot of people, so I want to be very careful about how I represent myself, especially with related planning and zoning commission stuff, so, um, I would certainly like some clarity on that. I, it's easy for me to understand, once we understand what it is that's expected, but I don't want to be the cause of, um, an appearance that something else is happening.
Okay, thank you, we'll let Allison address that.
When it's a matter that's going to be coming before your planning and zoning body, and you know it's coming before you eventually as, as a quasi-judicial matter, you need to act like a judge, because that's what you are. So, it may be two houses down from you, and yes, you can go sit quietly and listen, but you need to comport yourself with the way you would expect a judge to comport themselves at a regular trial. You're taking in information when you actually, or just prior to the, the start of the public hearing, you're probably all asked, have you had any ex parte communications, at which point you have the opportunity to say, I went to this public meeting, I listened, I did not discuss, and I received these two letters, uh, I had four phone calls, and each person who contacted me, I reminded them that this was a quasi-judicial, I couldn't take, I couldn't have individual conversations, but I encouraged them to either write a letter or come to the meeting. You have to step back and take that role of judge, if, if that helps.
Yes, but, still doesn't answer the three-people thing.
Again, we, we're, whatever policy that the, that the council or, or as, as a group, all of you, we can follow, um, all I can tell you is, if three or more members of any local public body are at a meeting where public business is discussed, those are public meetings, so my best idea on this, it may not be the only one, but my best idea is, if you are going to a public meeting that is associated with planning and zoning, contact the liaison, the planning and zoning liaison, and just say, heads up, I'll be at this meeting. If the liaison gets two, uh, emails or two phone calls, the liaison knows to contact...
There is no liaison for planning and zoning.
Um, the city staff member, we're calling all the city staff members liaisons?
Oh, staff members.
Uh, but that individual knows to contact the chair and request permission to post that as a possible workshop, with the limited language that members of planning and zoning, uh, three or more members of planning and zoning may be in attendance, so we are posting this as a study session, none of these individuals are intending, will be speaking or making public statements on this topic. Some type of generic agenda posting, I, I think that that is the best cover that we can do for any group in that situation, but again, the plan, the city councils working their way through this, they may want to handle it just a little bit differently, or you may, you may have better ideas.
I'm just concerned that we have five issues to go through, and this may be something that we need to have, uh, training for them, I, I think it's unfair to this commission to try to answer these questions kind of anecdotally right now, when I believe that there is a separation as to, uh, item three on here, between what council does and what this board does, and they have their own bylaws, and maybe they should work on that separate...
All right, thank you. I'm not asking that, though, I was asking exactly the very last thing, do you want us to come up with it, or do you want to figure it out at your next meeting and tell us, you know, we think we've got it figured out? That's all I'm really asking, because I...
And that's what I guess I was saying was...
And I'm not going into the, the specifics of yours, which was a great answer, it was really helpful.
Item three, I don't know that we have the authority to do it for this board yet, so we need to discuss that.
All right, thank you.
We, we have a meeting tomorrow evening, and maybe we can discuss that, and then come back with you and tell you what our decision would be, whether we want to look at our bylaws ourselves and come up with some ideas, or say, oh, we'd like you to give us, that sound okay?
I can see some reasons why you might pick one or the other, and you, and have to, so let me go back to the, then, the one, uh, communication. What, what are your key, when you feel like, oh my goodness, we need to be communicating more with council, what, what bubbles up in your mind? What kinds of things might come up that you think we should, and then I think we should adapt how often we meet, and what kinds of, I mean, I think, I would love to see us meet twice a year at least, if we could, just to kind of, I would have loved to have met with you all during the comp plan development, I really wanted that along the way, to sort of get another set of eyes and ears, but...
That's when I think it came up, ADUs has been one example, and the comp plan, both of those, because we would spend a lot of time working through issues, um, and unless you guys were listening to the meeting, you didn't have the benefit of that, that process, and then you're taking the comp plan without the, the context of the process that we've gone through, and adjusting it... through, and adjusting it, and with more dialogue, that could have been, I think, from our perspective, that would have been really helpful. But it's more big-picture policy questions. From, that's, that's my best recollection of, when does it come up, like, oh, I wish we could talk with council? It's mostly been on a comp plan, ADUs, and policy changes to the code that we make.
Maybe if we scheduled a meeting when one of those larger items kicked off.
Yeah.
Hey, ADUs is coming, let's have a group meeting, let's talk about this, and then it launches, and you guys take it and do your part, or Airbnb's is coming, maybe when we finally get a code that we believe in, we would pass it on to you guys, have a kickoff meeting, and then you guys run with it.
Yeah, I can see the issue, things being important.
I know with the ADUs, we talked about having a joint meeting for a long time, but for whatever reason, it never came about, and that would have been a good thing to have a meeting on.
Maybe we can have, then, a structure of, whenever there's something that's got a bigger policy overall thing, that we're gonna try and do at the very front end, a meeting to kind of begin to think, what are we all thinking about this, so we can see the different perspectives?
Absolutely. I think this is already being really helpful in the types of things that we could talk about and actually work together. Thank you for sharing that. The, and I have a couple of other things, and this goes back to what Mr. Fish shared about. This is a page out of the charter that deals with the Planning and Zoning Commission's responsibilities and duties. And I would just really encourage you, and I don't know if there's enough to go all the way around. But what I would encourage you to do, and what I think would be helpful for all the boards and commissions, is to really look at the charter and see what the charter says about your duties and responsibilities. And I just, on, on the left-hand side, under duties, I just wanna read this, because I think it's a really great reminder. "The City Planning and Zoning Commission shall prepare and submit to the council for its approval, a master plan and current modifications thereof for the physical development of the city. All plots of proposed subdivisions shall be submitted to the City Planning and Zoning Commission for its recommendations to council with respect thereto. The commission shall submit annually to the city manager not less than ninety days prior to the submission of the budget, a list of recommended capital improvements arranged in order of preference, which in the opinion of the commission are necessary or desirable to be constructed during the forthcoming five-year period. It shall prepare and recommend to the council a comprehensive zoning ordinance, or propose amendments or revisions thereto, with such provisions as the commission shall deem necessary or desirable for the promotion of the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the city." And there's a few other things, but I would just encourage you, perhaps in one of your meetings, to go over what the charter requirements are of the city, and, I mean, of the commission. The, I'm gonna skip over number three, that, we may talk about that. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting cancellations. And really, this was very problematic to me when, just a second, I've got to...
Well, actually, this is why we ended up wanting to call the meeting together.
Right.
Was because of the issues that have come up over the last couple of months about the meetings being canceled, so I'm glad it was on the agenda.
So, so your honor, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
In, in what you just read to us, are there specific areas where we're not, where, in your opinion, where we're not doing our job, or where our, our job that we've done has been insufficient? Or what, what is it specifically we can improve?
Well, the one thing that, that I find a little bit troubling is that the, it is your job to come up with the, the capital improvement projects. That is the job of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think what has been happening is that city staff has been coming up with the capital project list, and it's very clear in the charter that it has to originate from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Would it be possible for Manager Keck, maybe, to speak to this? I was just looking through the strategic plan, which also talks about capital improvements and the plan for those. And I guess, we can come up with a list, but we have no budget to work from. We don't, I mean, there's ideas and things like that, but many of the capital improvements are transportation projects, and we're not the transportation board. So we would need a little bit more direction on that as well, I think.
You've raised a good point, you know, and looking at this, I think Mayor Russell's point is accurate. This past year, as staff, we didn't bring them to you as soon as we could have or should have. But it's also a very tall order for a group of citizens whose main goal is to primarily look at applications that come through the city's unified development code, to all of a sudden become experts on transportation, utilities, water and wastewater. You're exactly right. So in order to rectify this to the best of our ability, we plan on bringing forward capital projects and discussion of capital projects to you much earlier this year. Matter of fact, it was my goal to try to start that in March, doesn't like that's gonna happen, probably be April that we'll start that process. But it is a, it's a tall order, you're exactly right. There are, for example, our five-year capital improvement plan has about seventy-seven million dollars worth of projects, and that's not even including all of our utilities projects, which are paid through ratepayers. It's all taxpayers' money. But it's, it's a complex requirement. I've never seen this in any charter. It's in our charter, and we have to follow it. So we'll do the best of our ability to help educate you as Planning and Zoning Commission members, and then you will have to coordinate with staff. So you may have meetings, you know, with, with lots of different folks, whether they be the transportation engineers, public works engineers, utility engineers, take a look at that.
Mr. Keck, I think we have to come to realization that even if we were to acquire the knowledge...
Yeah.
Are you saying we have control over the budget?
No, just the capital budget.
You see, that's the issue.
Yeah.
Is that the commission doesn't wanna waste its time making recommendations that are useless. And that's, I think, how the commission feels. This information has been brought to us, sometimes not so well. Which is a gracious way of saying it. Sometimes a little bit better. But in the end, it doesn't make any difference. So why should we put any effort into it?
I would, I would really like to see that we have a little bit more historical knowledge around exactly why that was put into the charter, and why that's a requirement, but it is in the charter. And if this is something that we think should be a charter change, based off of what you guys make an assessment of after, we have some historical basis for why, and exactly how much authority you do have in putting that list together, and presenting it to council, and what import it's supposed to have. But I think that that's something that you guys need to put on your agenda to discuss, because we cannot change the charter in a study session meeting. So I would like to have a little bit more history for why it's there, what the, what the reasoning was for, and how it's been handled in the past, and how, what you guys decide you wanna do to move forward with it. But that's not gonna be decided.
It'd be very helpful, but I think you, you need to understand from this perspective is that, up to this point, it's just kind of, I hate to be so blatant, it's just a joke to us, because it makes no difference what we recommend. And I don't, and we don't know where it goes. We come back the next year, and it's like, oh, brand-new scenario again. And so, it's a joke to us.
I understand that's how it's being handled, that you may feel that way now.
And if we can change that, that's great.
Okay, and so that's...
That's not how it was in the past either.
So my, excuse me. My question, then, is, if you thought you had authority, you would be happy to do it, is that what you are...
I think everyone wants to have meeting in their life, and if we actually have value in bringing something, we would put effort into it. Just like when we discuss in detail how to do ADUs and spend, you know, literally years doing it, we think it's important, and we're willing to put the time into it. But I don't think we're willing to put in time to something that has absolutely no impact whatsoever.
Well, and Ms. Austin?
I would agree, but I think what happened this last year is that we were presented a capital budget and asked to approve it. Although we had many comments about, we didn't think some of those things were capital improvements, I don't think, perhaps renewing software, or inoculating trees and things like that are in a capital budget. So that part was frustrating to us, because we just basically had to just say that. But we've also have the fact that we've had lots and lots of meetings canceled, and I do think, at least me personally, I would like more responsibility on the planning commission. And I think we have the brain power to learn. We're gonna need a lot of help from the city, Mr. Keck, obviously, 'cause we can't come up to speed on lots of things. But I do think that we'd have valuable opinions, and if we had more frequent meetings, that I think we could take off a good chunk of it in the future. And I think, back to the communications between us, I think one of the most important, or one of the most frustrating parts was the whole ADU process, where we thought we had asked all the questions, we, staff developed a questionnaire, and then we passed, went, discussed it and passed it, and dug on it. We got back somewhat from the council, you didn't ask these questions. We're just like, you know. So that's what I mean by communication, so that can be very, very frustrating. And perhaps, like, I think somebody over here mentioned, that when we're launching into a big, big topic, like, you know, short-term rentals, before we actually get to the part where we're coming down to recommendations, perhaps we should ask you, what are some things that we might not have thought about? And that would lower the frustration for all of us, I think.
Okay, thank you. Good point. Mr. Freemeyer?
Thank you. With, with regard to capital improvement budgeting, it also requires that we understand the other side of the coin, which is the financing. So in order to be able to do the budgeting, you have to know what, what sort of money you're working with, number one. Number two, in order to do that effectively, we need to have an indication from council, since they have the ability to levy. We need to understand what revenue level they're anticipating, what tax or fee increases or decreases there would be, and any user fees as such, and if they're considering alternative forms of financing that otherwise wouldn't be considered under a normal budget, if there are things that are of a greater nature that one could reasonably anticipate, we will never be able to fund it. Okay? At, in a previous community, we literally moved some money around to capital improvement from General, blah, blah, blah. And lo and behold, we're able to do all the, all the arterial streets, but it required coordination, and it required a complete picture of what that anticipated budget would be. So prior to getting this and being able to give you a recommendation ninety days before it has to be into, in effect, we need to backtrack and say, what are the tools necessary that we cannot provide for ourselves, that you can provide for us, so that we have an indication of what the council's willing to fund? Because as the old adage goes, spit in one hand and wish in the other, and see which one fills up. Right?
Absolutely. And, and I appreciate this, because that is absolutely correct. I do believe we have to have an idea of how much we're willing to spend on capital projects, and so...
And a notion for how you're going to fund it. And that requires, that, that requires not only far-in-advanced planning, from what I could necessarily glean, and I'm sure I don't have a complete picture, but from what I've gleaned in the last number of years. And secondly, it requires the, the political acumen and, and the, and the, and the guts to tell people, hey, guess what? It's gonna cost you X percent more, X pennies more on the levy. Whatever the case is, you gotta be able to have that conversation, and that is not at our level. That's at your level.
Right.
We all get elected to do the hard stuff.
Well, absolutely. But part of the reason we're having this conversation is because it's in the charter, and...
Oh, absolutely. Oh, I, I'm, I think, I think the commission would happily go along and would happily make all this happen, but it requires tools and information, and a lot of intestinal fortitude by many people in this room.
I agree with that. Thank you. Ms. Townley, did you have your hand up, or?
I don't think so. I think we covered that.
I would just add one more thing, that actually, I don't think it should be in the charter. I, I think it's just, like, completely outside the commission's purview. It's just it's in the charter, that's all we have to do it. So that would be my, I'm not sure, I'd...
Yeah, I don't disagree with what he's, I don't disagree with what he said, but it is in the charter, so...
I would disagree. I've been in council before, when the Planning and Zoning Board did this, and the council took it differently, so I suppose it's in the way that it's executed. So that's why I suggested that you look at the history, and why you believe it's in the charter, and what you can do with it. And if you don't believe it should, then maybe you should come back with the recommendation for that. But I think it needs to have more discussion than what we can do here.
I agree. I think we should have more discussion on it, and I think it's important to look at the history, but also look at how are we doing things moving forward, and what makes sense with the strategic plan, as well as with the comp plan, and our time? Because things are happening. And when we, I know we've had meetings that have been canceled, and staff has been very busy, but we're gonna be very busy, too. So we need a balance, what should our priorities be in decision-making, and what do we actually have power to decide on?
And we should have some shared vision, otherwise, we're never gonna, otherwise, our time will be wasted, 'cause you won't like what we put forward. So we have to have some shared vision of where things go.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Presta?
Thank you, Mayor Preston. To the comments by Mr. Fish, if it was determined that maybe it's not a good fit, is that something that would have to go before voters, because it's in charter?
Okay, thank you. And I think I passed out. I had, I had requested, when the meeting started being canceled, I requested why the meetings were being canceled. And so this is, Council Request seventeen dash one eighty-four is on the top, and this was staff's answer to council about why the meetings were being canceled. On the staple to that also is the communication that Planning and Zoning got on October thirty-first about why the meetings were being canceled. And so I just, I wanted to give that information to you. The, then the concern to me was that in the bylaws, in Planning and Zoning bylaws, it says, "The regular meeting of the commission shall be held on the Tuesday following the first and third Monday of each month, and such meeting shall commence at seven PM." And I spoke with the city attorney today. Do you wanna address this, or?
No, you do, fine.
Okay. Shall means it is mandatory. You can't decide that you're not going to have a meeting. And so the meeting should not have been canceled. And in response to Mr. Fish's, and that's correct, right? I, I have your name, Mr. Fish.
Right, F-I-S-H, it's great.
Right.
I think it's when it's Fish's.
Yeah. Apostrophe S. That, the, really, the meetings need to be directed, or the agendas need to be set up by the chair and the vice chair, and I do believe some of this is going to come up in the training, is that correct? That, I believe there's a board and commission training on...
Next Thursday.
Is it February twenty-eighth? At, is that Thursday?
I think so.
I think it's in Hampton Hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, in Hampton Hall.
Yeah, Hampton Hall.
Okay, so, I mean, I would just encourage you to come. I just, I think we've been doing things, just the way, because that's the way they've always been done, and I think there are some things that, you have brought up a lot of things that would have been great for us to communicate together, like on ADUs and, and the comp plan. And, and I really, you know, when somebody brought up the comp plan, I had totally spaced that out, but there were, when I was reading all the communications, there were so many things in there that I really wondered, it didn't attribute who said what on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think it would have been helpful. I, so on the, on the work plan for 2018, and that is the one that you all, it was written, I believe, on December nineteen, about the work plan for 2018. Have you already had an agenda on that? Have you talked about that?
We briefly did. We, we recapped what we did in 2017, and then briefly talked about what was coming up in the first quarter of 2018, or potentially what was coming up. So I think it also lends itself to not knowing what the priorities are of the council, to know then what we should set forward in agendas for the next year.
Okay. Councilmember Berentone?
First, first of all, in the, in the, what the handout was from the Community Development Department, that information that was provided to council was inaccurate, that the bylaws are very specific. It says that the bylaws are not specific as to the establishing a date and time of the commission meetings. It's very specific, and so is the charter. And your bylaws go off of the charter. It's important that the commission know what your bylaws say. And I think what I'm hearing, then, is that the commission sets the agenda. What I was concerned about on the first agenda that you guys were given for the first meeting for January, from staff, was written by staff, your agenda. And they did the recap of 2017, and then told you what you guys were gonna be doing for 2018, and...
It's always that way.
Correct. And then, that's what brought the issues... And then, that's what brought the issues up, was when the meetings started getting canceled, and they can't be canceled, and it comes from the commission. And what this letter says in response to council, wondering why these meetings were being canceled, was staff's busy. And then it turns out that it's the tail wagging the dog, that you guys are, that you guys, well, I mean, I'm not, no...
No, I hear what you're saying. I guess the question is, we've been doing a lot of work, so the fact that our meetings have been canceled, yet we're still producing what we need to produce, I'm not seeing what the issue is right now. We're meeting, we're moving forward, so why are we discussing the fact that we canceled meetings last year?
At the time that this was brought up in November, you were not meeting. At the time that this council request was brought up, we asked, why is the Planning and Zoning Commission not meeting? And we were told because, in this document that you were handed to us, because staff was busy. And it doesn't matter if staff's busy, that your bylaws and our charters say that the Planning and Zoning Board meets. They, they have to meet.
Okay.
Then the second concern came, that we're appointing people to go ahead and represent, and we're having staff set the agenda, and then there isn't that distance between the decision-making because staff isn't, then you're not just a vehicle of staff, you're supposed to be guiding them and leading them, not the other way around. So, that was part of the concern that brought up the original request, was that this body guides staff, not the other way around, that whether you have a meeting or not would come from this body, and then we've already established that you kinda have to have the meeting. So, we wanna make sure that we put it back into the authority of the people that we've appointed on this board and commission, so that we're following the law.
Thank you.
Well, I will just say quickly that I am happy, as chair, to work on an agenda. I would like to know several months out what we're going to be working on. I don't know which applications are coming in to community development. That's going to have to be communicated from them in order for us to develop an agenda and develop a list of priorities. So, it's gonna have to go both ways. I mean, we can help set the agenda, but I'm, I don't know everything that's going on in order to develop one out of the blue.
The council certainly can't set an agenda for us, and we don't do it in a bubble. We have to communicate with staff in order to make sure that that happens. I understand that piece of it, but where the concern came then, and certainly from the public as well, was that it makes it look as if our Planning and Zoning Commission is just an arm of staff, when that kind of thing ends up happening, when we had a contentious issue come up where you guys disagreed with staff, didn't want the, the periphery, and then all of a sudden, all the meetings were canceled for the next almost three months.
Okay, Councilmember Berentan.
And so, that's just where these issues came up and why we wanted to have the meeting in part as well.
Thank you.
It may be that the solution is more staff and, and more money for the department. Part of the problem, I think, was just staffing changes that, that were occurring, but there's not a lack of any willingness on the, people on the board to do work. And from what I see, there's an overwhelming amount of work for the staff. And on some of the policy issues that we're working on, they don't, they don't have the ability to prepare the materials that, that we need to be able to give thoughtful consideration to issues because they just, like, there's only so much they can do in a day. So, that may be another solution to it.
Okay. Mr. Fish.
I think it's a, a complex issue that has to be worked through, but it's true that the staff has led the commission for many years. And the reason for that is because the commission was not allowed to lead itself. When I was chair, and working on the comprehensive plan, I made numerous requests to the staff on various issues and was told that there was no flexibility, that we couldn't do that. And so, the tradition has been that the staff have controlled the mission to a great extent. That's because at the time, the council wanted that, I think. And, you know, if this council has a different perspective, I think that the commission can adapt to that. But it is a two-way street.
No, I understand.
And I think it's, it's always true that the council and the commission and the staff all have different agendas, and we are at conflict with each other at times. And that's okay, provided it doesn't get too lopsided in one direction. I think it did get too lopsided in one direction for various reasons. But if the council wants to work with the commission, I think, and I think Chair Townland will be very excited, in my opinion.
I believe that's why it's been brought back up, is just balance that back out.
Absolutely. And, and it's gonna take work because when you're going in one direction, it's a little bit difficult to go back. But I appreciate that, so...
And I don't really fault anybody. It just happened.
Right.
And it got a little bit lopsided, but we can certainly, I mean, I have great respect for the council, for the staff, for the commission, and, you know, not that we agree all the time, and not that I'm not, I don't, I get rowdy every once in a while, and, you know, but, yeah, that's 'cause we all care. And, you know, we can work through this, though, I think, very easily.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Councilmember Olson.
Good. Did you?
Did somebody want to say something first?
Yes. Oh, I just was gonna say that it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to have staff from community development. If we are going at the meeting, if we're going to do more work on the bu, on the capital budget, I mean, we could, we could use some meetings for training from, you know, finance or transportation, or, I mean, it doesn't have to be a mutually exclusive thing. We could, and not keep burdening community development. Maybe we can have other, you know, voices from, from the city that could help us with the larger picture that I think we're trying to get to.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
I like the turn of the tone here. I felt like we were putting you on trial a bit, and I wanted to apologize, 'cause that was certainly not my intent of having you here tonight, was to open up lines of communication, not to, I don't know, feel scoldy a little bit here, and I don't wanna be, at least for me, that's not what this is for. It's about opening communication and figuring out more ways to work together, because there are some really amazing issues coming forward. The ADU one was great. I don't know how you then get communication, which is another question back to one, how are you getting communication about what we decide? And we just made this decision to, some people wanted more questions. My issue was more, I don't think I've done my job enough to get more people who, who haven't been listening to this ADU discussion to, to the meetings, to give us more input. And so, that's why it got delayed a bit from my perspective. But how are you getting information about what we're saying and deciding at this point? Is it...
I, I think it's a, that really is, is a great question, Linda, and thank you for asking it, because we asked the same question. Why, what were they thinking? Why did they, why did they choose, why did they choose before an election not to deal with a controversial issue like ADUs? And it, and it became pretty simple, if they didn't wanna deal with it...
Spot on.
Because it was an election.
You were, that's not true.
But...
Well, it wasn't...
Okay, so, everybody has an opinion. All right? So, when, void of information, we do our best to try to understand in the most positive way possible why the council would be not voting on it, sending it back, saying, well, it's gotta be revised. And I think whatever the discussion was the last meeting, there was discussion about, well, the ADU thing may be coming back, I think it was the ADUs, may be coming back to you. And then, then, as a commission, we said, well, we certainly hope that there's, that there's some sort of a direction or some question, or a series of questions or comments with it that we can address. Otherwise, our work here is done, you can have it back. We'll play ping pong.
Right.
And then we can go scold one another.
Yeah, I appreciate that, 'cause I do think that there hasn't been enough of figuring out, okay, what, what did, I mean, I have listened to your meetings. Sometimes, I have to tell you that when you all speak and say why you decided something in more depth, it's really, really helpful. So, I appreciate it when you do that. I learned so much from what goes on with your, and some of you just talk a lot more than others, and that's great. I'm not asking you to stop. I'm asking you that don't maybe say as much, say a lot more so I know what went into your final decision, so that I get the benefit of all the studying you've been doing and reading on top of my own. So, I appreciate that. But I, I do think that, again, this is the back and forth, I think, needing to have a little bit more meetings together to figure out, why would we stop or slow down the ADU thing, and how do we communicate that well with you? And I don't know what, if there are any legal pieces with that, Allison, but...
Well, and I, I think you hit on something. Everybody likes to have a great conversation, okay? I don't think anybody likes to have a conversation that much of this meeting has been a tone of. I can read the charter and did so beforehand. I can do many things and don't need, need that to foster genuine communication.
Well said and well taken.
Okay, and, and I would like to add to that, because there was no agenda in this meeting. My concern has been the lack of communication, like you said, about ADUs and all of that. I, the thing that is very difficult for me is we haven't had these meetings, and so Planning and Zoning gets frustrated, and then council gets frustr, Planning and Zoning gets frustrated with council, and then council gets frustrated with Planning and Zoning. And I mean, I have heard comments on the tape from some Planning and Zoning members about how frustrated they are with council. I believe, and part of the reason I called this, is because that's lack of communication between us and you. And there, and whenever we're not communicating with each other, somebody else is the middleman communicating, and, and there's an interpretation piece. That's why I think that we need to, to meet together and, and it is, the hour is late. But I'm wondering if this, if it would be beneficial for us to have some deeper discussions about, you know, some of these bigger issues.
Mayor, I am, I am concerned about any comments that there's been any tone here or anything. I agree with Ron. What I've heard since I've been back on council is that the power, the authority that this board had, had been taken away from it. There is no criticize, criticism of this board. Staff works for this board. It is important that they are there to support you. You are their job. You are not a burden to them. You are their job. This is part of the process that we do for land use and zoning. It's extremely important. There is no other tone and any kind of implication that there's any kind of problem with the job that you guys have been doing is misled and misinterpreted. I saw that your authority and the distance between council and this board that needs to happen by law wasn't happening, and I want us to get back to following the law and that you guys have the authority and power that we have appointed you to have to do your job. And I think that's extremely positive because I have faith and trust in all of you to do it.